Did you see on my emails?
Yep.
I did.
Well, I threw a lot at you. Okay, Ken.
Ready to roll?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the clock's off. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call a meeting order. For public information, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is placed on the east wall of the Commissioners' Room. Roll call, please.
Meyer?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Knapper?
Yes.
Razig?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Would you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is certified by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, on the approval of the agenda, I think we've got a couple of changes. Charlie's got one, I've got one. I'd like to move the... To do what we had here? Under general item, discuss, consider termination agreements with the Regional West to just before Steve Baird's report, which would be right after Board of Equalization. So those folks don't have to wait through the whole meeting, if that's all right with everybody. Charlie, what do you have?
Um, I was just wondering if we could move general agenda items, that whole section to the area in front of Roden Bridge. And then if we could do update and decision regarding county assessor immediately after the item you just discussed. I have, I have to leave early tonight. Our SOC tournament was delayed, postponed last week, late last week due to weather. And I've got a tournament game to coach that starts at 5:15, so.
Okay.
I would like to be part of those items.
So we just want to flip-flop Roden Bridge and general agenda items? Is that what you're asking for, basically?
Basically.
And then move, and then move the hospital discussion up to the beginning of the general agenda items, then?
And then also then...
And then the assessor right after that.
And the assessor right after that.
Yep.
Keep me in line, please, Kelly.
I will do my best.
Is there any other changes?
And then if you guys could give me just a second to move that up, so I'm in line with record-keeping, it'd be great. I think I'm closer to being in order. Okay?
You're close?
I'm close.
You're the only one that is that. You're in good shape. Thank you, Kelly.
I would move that we approve the agenda with the amendment of moving up the item with the hospital to before Roden Bri... all the general agenda items before Roden Bridge. And then to rearrange the general agenda items, the Regional West item to be first and the County Assessor item to be second.
Okay. Are there any other changes? Board, do you have anything? Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Record your votes.
Okay, to close?
Close, please.
And you have five yeses?
Thank you. Want to remind everybody that the board does reserve the right to move into executive session at any time that we feel is necessary. As of this time, we don't have an executive session scheduled. Uh, so the next item would be approval of the consent agenda. Anybody like anything removed?
I would motion to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Any discussion? Record your votes, please.
Okay, to close?
Close, please. Motion to move in Board of Equalization?
I'll move, move to move into Board of Equalization.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Record your vote.
I mean, I'm sorry. I've been in a lot of meetings. All right.
Okay, to close?
Close. Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good.
You're looking pretty chipper tonight. Everything must be going great, right?
Been a busy day.
Been busy. Okay.
All right, so we have that tax list correction that you should have received. And we decided to include with that a, kind of an explanation. That's for the Turk hearing decision that was received on August 8th with regard to BSL and Gearing. So they exempted the building and the lands and the personal property where the care center, that parking lot sits on, and then taxing where the cottages are. So basically taxed everything north of Lodge Drive, exempted it south.
Okay.
Isn't that what we wanted?
I...
Well, I don't know that, I don't know.
I'd have to go back and look, but I thought, I thought we denied the exemption. Did we not?
We denied the exemption. That's why they appealed to Turk.
That's why they appealed it to Turk. I was, that's what I was thinking.
Now, for 2023, the value was set correctly, up in line with the Turk decision. But for the buildings, but not for the land, so we had to adjust the land for 2023.
So is there any adjustments that we need to do as far as reimbursements or anything?
No, they did not pay.
Okay.
They were waiting to pay.
Waiting, waiting to see what the decision was. Okay, gotcha.
And there's tons of counties across the state who have also exempted it.
Okay.
No, no, I'm not sure that I understand yet.
Okay.
When we first voted on this item, we voted to exempt them for those buildings you're talking about.
Yes.
And we did not exempt them on the cottages.
Right.
But this was for 2022, the Turk decision. So you did not vote, I think you voted on 2023. I think that was a result of...
Are you talking about protest hearings this year?
Well, I, no, I don't think so. It was prior to that.
Yeah, we had a separate...
That was in, I think, third quarter 2022, when they announced that they were a 501(c)(3).
Okay.
And she was on the, their representative was on the telephone.
Phone, that's right.
And she just announced that. But I think at that point, they had already appealed that to Turk.
Prior to already saying?
Prior to that decision.
Okay.
Yep.
So this is a result of the 2022 taxes that were due in 2023.
So from here on out?
Correct.
They will be taxing, according to Turk, they're tax-exempt?
On the care facility, parking lot.
Right.
The cottages and any, and the land that sits underneath of them. And then any of the new cottages that they're building will all be taxable.
I didn't even think they asked for the cottages all that. I thought we left those exempted.
They didn't, but this was on 2022.
2022, so 2023, the cottages are exempt, are off? They're not exempted?
They're not exempted.
The cottages are not exempt and the land they sit in.
Only the, only the, the parcels that she was talking about.
Yeah.
But the the main building and the nursing, right, the nursing portion is exempt.
And their personal property associated with that parcel are exempt, with that care facility.
And so I know Turk has always adjusted value. I'm not sure I understood them to make decisions as to whether they were exempt or not. And so my point in this is that Russ has argued that we should have never given them an exemption on those buildings.
On a 501(c)(3).
And I don't know whether we should or shouldn't have. And I thought... So I don't know if this settles it once and for all, that they're going to be exempt, but if that's the story, then...
Charlie's got some information.
But I would assume that Turk knows. They're not going to make a decision on something that they don't have the authority to make the decision on. Would that be a correct statement?
Correct.
Thank you.
I would hope so.
Yeah, I would do.
I have a question for you.
Okay.
Do they file this on a Form 451?
Um, they have not yet for 2023.
Correct.
Uh-huh.
Do they?
But they probably should.
Well, I mean, because there is a process on the back of a 451 that I found that...
Right.
It directs them to Turk.
I don't think they'll have to, from here going, they will get one from, we should get one from them this year. And that's, is it, is that after your...
Okay, Charlie, you had a comment or something on it?
Well, thi- this changes everything that I, any work I've done on this. You know, I, I had multiple conversations with Ruth Sorenson on this. Received some emails back and forth on this, which I think I shared with you guys during the meeting last week. It, it is a huge wrench into what I was thinking before, but because I thought it was the county board's decision whether or not to grant the permissive exemption. I didn't know that Turk could come in and do this. If this is the way it's going to be, there's no reason for this to come before this board.
Everybody could go to Turk.
Yeah, I don't know that this was necessarily a permissive exemption. Um, the ca... it says the county board offered to confess judgment.
What does that?
That's, you arrived at a settlement. Your attorney.
Who represented us?
Who represented?
Would have been Dave, I guess. Eubanks.
Kirk, maybe Kirk fell home to it. I never can say his name correctly.
How can the attorney go to Turk on our behalf and not even, not even talk to us? This is not, not, not angry with you guys whatsoever.
Oh, no, I, I guess.
But that, that seems like a, a very ingenuous item that the county attorney just took care of, took, took care of for us.
He won, he, he fought on our behalf, basically.
Without conferring with us.
I didn't even know who it is.
Um, doesn't say.
Well, there's no action that we're going to take on it anyway.
There's more work to be done. More, more will be revealed.
Can we get some clarification on it, please?
So what do you want me to, just so I have what you want me to? How we arrive?
First of all, do they have the authority to, to overturn a, a, an exempt? Something that we vote on in this board, do they have the authority to overturn that?
And could you talk to Ruth, Ruth and find out if we have the authority to reverse it? Because Charlie, that's what we've been talking about. Looking at the law's beginning.
You want to reverse something that Turk has done?
No, that, that we've done. If this, we, we actually allowed the, the...
Nah. For us to have an attorney at Turk and, and go against our wishes? To representing us in a way that we would do not wish to be represented? That, that doesn't sit well with me. And I would like to know, so if you could find out who represented us at Turk? And why they felt that they should take the avenue that they took?
Or, or did we not even have any representation? That might be the, the second question.
Might be, right?
Yeah, I don't know.
It might be standard language. We'll find out.
Yeah, I have no idea.
Because if we're talking about valuations, generally speaking, that's an issue that the assessor is part of that. And I thought Mr. Eubanks normally represented us in that scenario, but maybe not. I don't know.
I don't know. And this came out on August 8th, so the state was here then. You know, when this came out.
Well, I think we're, we're getting some conflicting information. And one of the reasons it's important to me was just simply because Commissioner Razig has been wanting to review this and possibly relook at this in the future. And now I'm wondering, there, there's been some talk of that they own several properties throughout Nebraska. And there's been talk that some of the properties are exempt and some are not.
Um, I think that was the case before they appealed to Turk. I don't know that that's the case now.
You're thinking...
This might be consistent with what's happening across the state.
So this ruling may be going to be effective across the state, is what you're saying?
Right. This one only pertains to Scottsburg County, but it is my understanding that the gal from BSL, they have, they appealed this across the state.
Well, if Turk's making a decision about whether or not they're exempt or not, then it doggone better apply across the state, whatever it is.
Yes. And I don't know how the Confession of, I mean, if there were others that they decided, you know, if there were 20 that appealed and 15 of them were done before they got to us and they had, Turk had said they're all exempt. It seems, um, that, that's the direction that they would go. So why do we want to pay money to fight something that it's going to go in that direction anyway?
Well, it seems to me that we're confused.
Okay.
And that, um, at some point in time, if there can be some clarification on this issue, we'd love it. But for some reason, we're confused.
We're back to where we don't have anybody in that chair, just like right now. That should be read to us and explained what we've done here.
Right, and we may need to still do that with...
With somebody.
With someone, yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
One, one of, one of the things we'll need to do, Kelly, is to check to see whether we either approved it or disapproved it, the exemption. That would, that would help as far as what we...
We approved the exemption.
Okay.
I need to know in what form they got the exemption.
That's a difference.
What manner?
Yeah, and you might go back and check to see what that might be.
I need a starting place to look for the information, is what I'm saying.
Well, it's within the last two years.
Angie brought it in here, so it would be in the assessor's office.
I think, I think...
Well, it wasn't exempt for 2022 or prior.
Okay.
So...
That was after it was purchased, is, is when they asked for the exemption. Is that correct?
It's been purchased.
Well, no, it's, yeah, it, Better has owned it for a number of years. All, all that changed in third quarter 2022 was they went to a 501(c)(3).
And then asked for the exemption.
And that's, that's when that took place.
Gotcha, okay.
And Ruth Sorenson explained to you, 501(c)(3) is, doesn't, it does not get an...
Well, that's not automatically qualified.
That's right.
However, there are other factors here.
There's that, the line of things that they have to meet, yeah.
Things going on, all the profits are being reinvested back into the business. That's what I understood from her phone comments.
Okay, but I, but I think Charlie's point is who represented us and what did they represent when they went down there?
Particularly, yeah, if it went in front of Turk, then...
Somebody had to be that represents Scottsburg County.
Yeah, I'm questioning that too.
All right.
But they do have a...
I'll see what I can find out.
They used to have a brochure in their lobby over there that you could get it out and read it. The transition that they made from a for-profit organization to a 501(c)(3) and what they were doing and why and several things. And that, that piece of literature has been right there in their foyer for a long time. I think it's still there. I might have to stop by and get one sometime.
Okay, well, all right, well, let's, let's move on then.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to receive the tax list corrections.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Record your votes.
Ken?
Who?
You.
Well, I'm pushing it. There we go.
Okay to close?
Okay, next item.
Okay to close?
Yes, please.
Try the other one.
Next item, discuss and consider permissive exemption for parcel 010357793. Skipper's cupboard.
So, um, in your packet, you'll have the exemption application that was originally submitted on May 24th, 2023. We did bring this, this item up as the last Commissioners' meeting on October 2nd. Since then, there's been some new information that has arisen that may change your decision about approving or denying the exemption request. I, I did bullet point out the items. The first one, which is very important, the property is no longer in a TIP. That TIP was paid off on, as of July 31st, 2023. It's important to note that Skipper's Cup, Skipper's cupboard is still open and provides services except for pet food. That's the only service that they've eliminated. Back taxes on the parcel have been paid through the first half of 2023. The second half are still due and payable. They were due on August 31st. And as of today, those back taxes were $730.89. Uh, the 2022 taxes were 1,438.02. And as a reminder, Skipper's cupboard is a 501(c)(3), okay? So given those facts, uh, the, the assessor's office is now recommending that you approve this exemption request.
With the information that was given to you guys, okay?
That's correct.
But now is that, are there, is there Medicaid involved and all these other steps that these other people are allowed to live by?
No, but there, there are some parameters by which other entities who don't provide health services can still qualify.
Such as churches and other places, yes.
Terrible organizations.
Right.
And Mr. Markheim is here, uh, because there was some question about whether they were still open at the last meeting. So that's one of the reasons it was taken. So if you want to, if you're going to come?
That'd probably be good, yeah.
Hello, how are you Commissioners?
Good, how are you doing?
Yeah, first of all, thank you for all you do for the county. It's my work.
Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, Steve Markheim.
Okay.
2150 Pacific Boulevard, Gearing.
Thank you.
And I apologize for my voice. I just found out through a thyroid scan. I have a thyroid issue, so that's sympathy. I'm prepared to answer any question you might ask. I don't want to take up your time with boilerplate. So we are open. We are still working with community organizations. Most recently, I've got a form here from Mitchell High School where we provided, uh, community service opportunities on as late as October 3rd for one of their students to earn school credit hours for community service. This summer, we also did book hounds with the Gearing Library. And we're prepared to go on advocating for animals and pets. Whether it's collegial, working with Sheriff's Department, or Doves Program, or, uh, Humane Society or so forth. But to elevate that issue, we think in 15 years, we've done a good job of overcoming the myth that there's no such thing as hungry pets or county residents that are struggling with finances. And so now we want to kind of use this position to keep elevating that.
Mrs. Byer said something about the dog food. Are you no longer giving out dog food, or how's that working?
Yeah, no, we, as of August 31st, we suspended dog and cat food.
Okay.
There's several issues, if you'd like me to go into them.
No, that's, that's okay. I just, I thought that was what your main thing was, was the...
Yeah, no, we also do shelters, we do leashes, we do collars, uh, we do public outreach. Uh, we do community service, uh, through, uh, probation department when somebody needs time. And primarily that is when we build shelters such as dog houses and give youngsters a chance to be involved with that, like ESU 13.
So it is, it is an educational...
It's still an educational advocacy, yes. And it falls within the parameters of our 501(c)(3) that was approved by the IRS.
Well, I would make a motion to consider, to approve the permissive exemption for...
I will second that. Any discussion? Thank you for the work that you do. I appreciate that. It's 15...
I'd like to introduce Becky, Becky Markheim. She's the co-founder. Uh, she's my wife and she's what keeps me on track, so I don't want you to think I'm the only foghorn in the battle, okay? Thank you.
Can I open to vote?
Yes. Any other discussion? Record your votes, please.
Okay to close?
Close, please.
And you have five yeses?
Thank you.
So, I'm Mark. This is great, for your decision?
And then sign down the bottom.
If it's different than my county assessor, just if you could put a reason, tell me what to put as a reason we can do it.
Recommendation? Okay. I got those for you. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, next item, consider approval of the 2022 uncollectible distress warrant resolution.
So I have the, um, uncollectible distress warrant resolution that I bring up to you guys every year. I don't know if you want to approve it or not. I didn't really have any personal property that we think is uncollectible, um, going into the next distress warrant year, which starts on November 1st. So I didn't know if you wanted me to approve, or if you wanted to approve this resolution or not. There really isn't anything, everything that's out there, we feel is, um, we're still going to try and collect in the next distress warrant year.
Just like nothing's changed. You just continue to collect what you can?
Yeah.
Okay?
So I didn't know if you wanted to do the resolution or if you wanted to not do it this year. But by state statute, I have to present it to you.
So are you saying we don't have to do it, or we do have to do it?
It can be tabled and extended later.
Well, I don't have anything that I deem uncollectible, so I don't know if you want to do this resolution or not. If not, well, I'll come back with the next year. Okay. And that's fine.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to not...
Not do the resolution. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Record your votes.
Hang on, sorry. Okay, it's not you, it's me. Ken, Mark? Mark? Okay to close?
Close, please. Okay, next item is consider approval of a 2023 county tax sale resolution.
Okay, so this resolution I would like you guys to consider. Every year, it, on the 1st of November, I take out the county tax sales on the properties that have been to the public tax sale twice. They've not sold in the public tax sale. They don't currently have any sort of a tax sale, but they're, um, three years behind on their taxes. After three years of holding a tax sale certificate on top of that, then the county does foreclose on them. So, do you want me to read this resolution?
How long is it?
It's not terribly long.
Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, whereas the county treasurer submitted a listing of delinquent real estate taxes and special assessments to the county board, and whereas Section 77-1918 of our vice statutes of the state of Nebraska states that the county board of commissioners may instruct the county treasurer to issue tax sale certificates on delinquent parcels, be it therefore resolved that the county treasurer of Scottsburg County, Nebraska, issue tax sale certificates to said county covering parcels of real estate on which taxes were delinquent for three or more years and that are now, not now, under tax sale certificates. Such delinquent taxes have been advertised for two consecutive years and a legal newspaper published in the Scottsburg County, Nebraska, as prescribed by law.
Okay. Have a motion?
I move we approve the resolution.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? Record your votes.
Okay, to close?
Close. Last item under Board of...
Do you have five yeses?
Thank you. Last under Board of Equalization, consider resolution for certification of fiscal year 2023, 2024 tax.
Any questions? I sent this to all of our political subdivisions for review. Um, I didn't hear back from anybody, but the college and I, we've matched up since then.
So my question was, did the, did the college change their levy after the pink postcard meeting?
Their whole budget got changed, but, um, I think their total ask went down overall.
So they did exceed somewhere?
And they still needed to be a part of the pink postcard episode.
But it didn't, it didn't change.
Right.
But they...
They couldn't get under it.
But it apparently lowered itself, that's what was reported.
Not prior to the meeting.
That's what I, I couldn't tell from the articles.
What's that?
All right, I would entertain a motion for either approval or denial of the resolution, please.
I move approval of the resolution of the final levies for fiscal year 2023, 2024.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any other discussion? Record your votes, please.
Okay to close?
Close.
And I'm sorry, I, I've got to leave.
And you have five yeses?
I have to leave. I've got a group of nine-year-olds counting on me.
I need a motion to come out of Board of Equalization, please. I need a motion to come out of Board of Equalization, please. Good luck, Charlie.
I make a motion that we, uh, move out of the Board of Equalization.
Is there a second?
Sorry, who was my motion?
Mike.
Mike.
In the second?
Okay, record your votes.
Okay.
Okay. As per our motion, we're going to move the general agenda items up, uh, prior to Rowan Bridge, sorry, Steve.
Mark?
Do you need a vote yet?
I need you to, I need you to get, there we go, to close, leaving the Board of Equalization.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, very good, all right, so the first item we're going to discuss is the, uh, termination agreement between Regional West. Before we do that, Paulette.
I mean, stay down there. I'll come down, maybe. Well, explain this a little bit further as we get into this, but Paulette is, will no longer be within the employ of Scottsbluff County, uh, she's going to the, to the, uh, Panhandle Health District in the second week, and, uh, she was with us for thirty-seven years, I don't know if anybody does it-
Thirty-seven, really?
Thirty-seven years, do you remember, but, uh, this is to Paulette now, in appreciation for your service and dedication for the past thirty-seven years for Scottsbluff County.
Oh, well, thank you.
Well, now that you're gonna make me all choked up here and everything.
Thank you for doing that.
No, that's my job.
Um, we have a, with this, um, we have Melvin Nee from the hospital who's gonna present the-
Oh, he thought you weren't gonna talk.
Welcome again, Mel, it's good to see you.
Good to see you.
Really is.
Um, so, what you have before you is the decision, uh, by Regional West, um, moving forward with changes that we've all kind of discussed, uh, the, um, termination of the agreement or contract between Regional West and Scottsbluff County for the health director position, and for the, um, two FTEs for the nursing, uh, public health part, um, and so-
We've been talking about the proposal, and we think it's a great opportunity, provide continuity of services and care to the people of Scottsbluff, and maybe help lower, uh, the taxes a little bit for our constituents, and, um, we continue to work, uh, but we also appreciate the fact that the Panhandle is a great, uh, you know, uh, organization to work with, and, and we work closely with them, so.
Very good, we, uh, we did have the opportunity to just have a short meeting last week, just to kind of lay out how it was gonna be presented here this evening, and, uh, I, I, I think we got everything ironed out, no more duplication of services, and I don't think we're gonna lose any services, it's going to be a better, better operation, I believe, uh, for everybody, with the help of Kim, eh, from Panhandle Health District, uh, ever since the Scottsbluff County joined Panhandle Health District, it has been better, and, uh, so I, I, I think it's a good move, it's good, it's gonna save some money, and I don't remember the, the numbers that we were paying for the nurses.
Three hundred and some thousand?
Yeah, three, it was over three hundred thousand dollars that we were paying for nurses that we won't be doing anymore, and you're not gonna get it either, Kim, so don't sit there, don't, don't smile thinking that we're gonna- But I, I think it's a good move, it's a good partnership, and, and we, we appreciate everything, that's everything, Paulette, we appreciate everything you did for a long time, a long time, you did an excellent job.
It's been my privilege.
Well, not as much as ours, trust me, trust me.
Thank you.
Okay?
Do we need separate motions for these?
Um, we just need, uh, where am I at here, we need a motion to terminate the agreement with Regional West Medical Center Nurses and Health Director.
It, it looks like it's all the same thing.
There's two different ones, there's two different.
Right, one was dated June eighteenth, twenty-eighteen, one was Ja- dated July fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one, that's the major differences I see on these two resolutions.
I have copies, Kelly, if you don't have them.
Well, I have them, but I wasn't informed that there were two, so we don't have two agenda items.
So, we could approve both in one then, would be helpful to you, Ms. Kelly?
I'm, I believe so.
Would that be okay with everyone?
Yes, that'd be fine.
All right, so I'll move to approve both of the termination agreements, one dated June eighteenth, twenty-eighteen, and one originally dated July fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, that's the motion, is there a second to the motion? Is there any discussion? Record your votes, please. There we go.
Okay to close?
Close, please.
And I'm just gonna mark Charlie since he was excused as abstaining, so that-
That'd be fine.
And we've got four yeses.
All right, thank you. Very good, thank you, folks, for everything. Uh, the next item. Keep me, keep me moving here in the right direction.
The assessor?
Yes, we want to update, uh, and decision regarding the county assessor. I don't remember what date it was.
October thirteenth?
October thirteenth, was that the date? We did receive a communication indicating that, uh, Angie has resigned, uh, yeah, for, and we're not gonna get into all the details, but, uh, she did have a serious health issue, and felt it necessary that, uh, she resigned her position, so we will need a motion from the board to accept that resignation, and, uh, we'll move forward then, in replacing that after we get some certifications and some other things going, but as it is right now, Jean is still our, our certified assessor in, in the office, no, it's not that bad, is it, Jean? And, and Robert, Robert is back here and is working towards, towards all of that, and we will, we will, uh, move forward on that as, as things are going, so. With that, I would entertain a motion, and only say that Angie gave us twenty-
Twenty-three years.
Twenty-three years of service to the county, and we certainly appreciate that, I know this isn't the way that, that she had planned on it, but, uh, uh, health issues happen, and, uh, we want to, uh, extend our, our, uh, thank you to, uh, Angie and her family, uh, especially to Angie for the work that she did for Scottsbluff County in the last twenty-three years, and, uh, wish her very well, we wish her well, we have no idea what the prognosis is going to be, but we, we, we hope it's something better anyway, so, with that, I'll entertain a motion to accept the resignation of the county assessor.
Why move that we accept the resignation of the county assessor?
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Record your votes.
Okay to close?
Close, please. Okay, very good, thank you. Uh, next item will be the first item under general agenda, I think I'm getting it all right here, I'm working on it. Discuss, consider approval of the South Central Panhandle, Nebraska, nine-one-one regional inter-local agreement, Tyler? Good evening, sir.
I believe the, the copies you have in your packets are, uh, like markup copies, that show in red the changes from the twenty-seventeen agreement, uh, to now, and so now with the region being completed, um, uh, it came up for editing, and so in red is what has been changed, and then I have a copy here that's not marked up for the actual sign.
Is yours in color?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so that's the one that we're gonna sign, is the one you have, Tyler?
That we'll sign, um, and so this is the interlocal agreement, uh, for the South Central Panhandle Region of P Saps, uh, this is where we have interoperability with each other, uh, through the Viper, uh, call-taking solution, if we go down here, our calls can be answered in Campbell County, or in Sidney, or in Buffalo County, and, and vice versa, uh, that has happened already quite a bit with fiber cuts that occur around the state, and we're able to make sure that nine-one-one calls always get answered that way. And so I guess what I'm looking for is a motion to approve it and sign, and then I'll get it back to, uh, the collector body.
Okay, do I have a motion to either approve or disapprove?
I got a question, maybe before that, um-
Okay.
So this, um, new agreement was initiated by us, or by them, or who?
Uh, Buffalo County is like the, the chair of the region.
Okay.
And I believe they had, uh, some attorneys in twenty-seventeen that originally drove, drew it up, and then it was sent out to all of the, uh, participants in the interlocal, and, uh, they looked it over, I sent it to Dave, um, a few weeks ago to review.
So he's looked it over?
I believe so, uh, he didn't, he didn't tell me one way or another.
Okay.
Tyler, what's our cost to this, I see our costs and what is, are all the next outs are for real value here.
Uh, all costs to participate in it, uh, have already been done and gone, uh, for the initial turn-up of the interlocal, I think that it was around eleven thousand dollars a participant, and that's mostly, and that's mostly just for upkeep costs on the-
Did you do that for a year?
Yeah, we, we paid it through, uh, actually our wireless set aside funds, uh, from the twenty-nine, twenty-nine fourteen fund.
But it's a, it's a recurring cost.
I thought you told me it was a one-time thing.
Yeah, but it was, it was one time for the, and then, then from there, all it is, is just maintenance on the system.
So there is a recurring cost?
Yeah, but we would have to pay that if we were independent or, or part of the local.
Making sure I understand.
Just checking.
I think the sheriff has something to say, too.
I just, I just wanted to, I just want you guys to know that when, when we started overseeing this, uh, this operation, which was twenty-twenty, so, it's several years we've been doing it, and we met, one of the people we get with, he's one of the most knowledgeable people in this state about nine-one-one systems, the Sheriff Miller in Buffalo County, so he's, he, the nine-one-one is really his passion, and so, so this interoperability, and we've been really going towards, we've, me and Troy Braddock, we've seen a lot of it, and this is a good thing, because this gives us, this, this makes it a lot better for us, because we've got this backup potential, and so it kind of ties all the nine-one-one systems together, and so South Central starts in county and is encompassing, pretty much everybody on this end of the state is doing the same thing, and so we've seen, as Tyler told you, we've seen the benefit already, and there's been cable cuts, um, and so, uh, the, the other thing that it helps us with is that some of these recurring costs, the state has some, we get some money, so it's not insignificant, um, it comes from, from the taxes that go, that go onto cell phones, and, so, every, all of the costs of this, except, uh, personnel costs, but other costs, we can pay out of that money, so that's not kind of tax dollars, it's not gonna drive up our tax dollars to be a part of this, it's, it's a good thing, we, we spend a lot of time and ask a lot of questions about it, and I think, you know, across the state, lots of other county boards, I don't know how many P Saps are in this, do you?
Oh, yes, I think there's, well, count them up here, uh- Twenty-two.
So twenty-two, then, then, you know, it includes North Lab, and so, so there's, uh, there's twenty-two county boards that have already through this, so, um, we think that's a good thing.
Okay, again, I would entertain a motion to either approve or disapprove, as submitted.
I make a motion to approve the interlock agreement.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? Record your votes, please.
Okay to close?
Close, please. All right, next item, thank you, guys, appreciate it. Is that for all, the, the whole board signature, Tyler?
Take it, take it to him and have him sign in the right place for me, and then give it to me, please.
There you go, thank you. All right, next item is discuss, eh, discuss and consider request for fifty thousand dollars for Lander Soccer Field scoreboard, bleachers, and sound system. Ms. Lysy, go for it.
Okay, well, first my normal disclaimer, um, all of the asking funds from tourism come from the lodging tax dollars, um, so it's all of the money that we generate through, um, all lodging and camping in the county, and with this, if you remember, almost two years ago, you approved fifty thousand dollars for lighting for Lander Soccer Field, and that was not completed, so basically what this is, is just a reapplication for that fifty thousand dollars, and what they did is just switched a few things around, um, the lighting was going to turn out to be way more money than what they could possibly raise on their own, so the Western Nebraska, um, football club has actually hired somebody to help them with that whole process, um, it's gonna take, uh, way more to get that lighting in there, but, so that they could continue to run tournaments, they decided that they needed to go with what they thought was going to be phase two, and that's bleachers, and a scoreboard, and then also, um, more comfortable seating for the teams with the coaches, so that they're, you know, more in a team setting, and this would help, um, both Western Nebraska Community College, who also plays on that field, Scottsbluff High School, and then also the football club, because they would at least be able to start recruiting more teams in to utilize the complex, so really, it's the same fifty thousand dollars, it's just kind of redirected on what, how they would like to spend the money, and actually, it is still in my budget, I just never took it out, because I knew that, um, they would be just kind of redoing the application, so.
Do they have a, like a crow's nest or something, where the announcing is being done, or how do they, how do they do that up there?
I don't, I don't believe-
I don't remember seeing a building up there for anything like that.
No, I don't believe this.
They have a concession stand, I think it's all they have.
I think they have that.
Now, you, we approved the money last year, but it never got spent?
Nope, it didn't get spent. They have one year to spend it, from the date that you approve it, and so they did not meet those requirements.
Yeah, I see they're getting ready to put lighting up there right now, they're taking down old poles, and they're gonna, they're putting new lighting, this is one up by the armory in Scottsbluff, right?
No.
No.
No, this is off of forty-second.
Across from the cemetery.
East of the hospital.
More of the cemetery.
But I'm way off there.
Yeah, so no, they're, they're not quite ready for the lighting, they just are gonna switch the phases around and start here instead of the lighting, and hopefully that will come, it was gonna be way more expensive than-
So I just wanna confirm that you never gave them that other, other fifty thousand?
No.
You still have it?
I still have it.
And we're redirecting it to this project?
Yes.
All right.
That is correct.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, all right, have a motion for approval?
I'd mo- move approval of the request for fifty thousand for Lander Soccer Field scoreboard, bleachers, and sound system.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? Record your votes.
Okay to close?
Close, please.
You got four yeses?
Okay, very good, thank you, Brenda. Also, I know Brenda's leaving, uh, for, but I just wanted to thank her publicly, both her and Lisa, for putting the PowerPoint together for State of the Valley next week for me.
Yeah.
Cause if I, if I had to do it myself, nobody'd know what I was talking about, so.
Well, I panicked this morning, because I thought it was Wednesday, and I-
I know you did. I know, I know you did.
Yeah, but it's next Wednesday, so.
But thank you, thank you for your help, both, both of you, appreciate it.
All the time in the world now.
Okay, next item is, uh, receive inventories for district judge, county judge, clerk magistrate, tourism, public defender, Kelly?
Just the last bit of inventories that I bring to you every year before September first.
Okay.
Ideally.
Have a motion for approval?
I accept, I make a motion to accept you on Teresa's presentation.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Record your votes.
Okay to close?
Close, please.
And you've got four yeses?
Thank you, I think we've got everything under general agenda items. Is that correct? All right, now, Steve, you're up, buddy. Sorry.
He sits here the whole evening, right?
He's always here.
First, I have discussed, consider approval of county annual certification, uh, program compliance, and chairman's signature on the documents.
Okay, this is our annual certification, that we're doing things according to the way NDOT wants them done, um-
I would hope so.
Yeah, um, I think Kelly gave you in your packets, the little letter from Lemoine that's in there from NDOT, and the list of all the required-
And the list of all the requirements and bullet points on that page would look like something like that. I believe she gave that to you guys.
Yes.
Um, to explain some of those bullet points, all this certification does is make sure that it includes that we're doing our one and six year plan that we approve every year, which we've done. Uh, that we're following the minimum design standards for the bridges and the, and the roads as we reconstruct those or rebuild them. By that, you know, we're following engineering. We're, you know, it's over a hundred thousand like Highland. We have an engineer designing it. We're not trying to do it on our own. The third bullet point, expand all tax revenue for the highway and road, that we're using our highway allocation on the roads. We're not putting up a soccer field or something with it. That, that money has to be allocated for the roads and spent on the roads. Um, of course, that we have a budget with our expenses and what we're budgeting. And that we have a, an accounting system for machinery, for equipment and supplies, um, and that tracks the costs. Um, this is a, all this has been done for, you know, years. We're still doing it, so. Um, there's a financial sheet in there that I gave, Kelly probably gave you in your first sheet. That is the one, if you remember, at Budget Time when I explained about what our county match needs to be getting up to seventy percent to help fix these asphalt roads. That's the sheet there that tells you how much in the fiscal year twenty-three the match was down at the bottom there. So, you know, the county matched forty-nine percent of the, of the highway allocation that we got. Um, the minimum is the twenty-five percent. So, uh, we met that. Just about doubled that, yeah. So, now if you look going into the next year for the, uh, fiscal period, uh, doesn't show us carrying over a cash balance. The previous year it showed us carrying over two hundred thousand. All this is, uh, expenses and budget that have been approved already. So the budget in the right column is the budgeted amount for the next year, already been approved. The expenses we get from our treasures report at the end of the year, what we spent that year that is put in there. And that's really how all that sheet is, is figured in there together. I believe there's probably six more sheets you probably got anyway. It really just breaks it all down as far, as far as the expenses and the, and, uh, income that we get, that we have to submit to the state. So that's really what this all is and a big, nice fancy packet that the state, the Board of Classifications and Standards likes to have by the end of October, so.
Thank you.
There is a resolution, um, and I can read it if necessary. I think you all had it in your packet.
Is that the second item for approval then?
Oh, there's, these, this really is all lumped together.
Okay, because the first one, first one doesn't talk about any resolution. That's all the reason I brought it up.
The resolution just is the county board members saying it's okay for Ken to sign the papers. That gets signed by everybody. And then there's two others that Ken signs himself. So.
Okay, so we are, we are voting on the approval of the county annual certification program?
Yes.
And the resolution or?
So by vote, by approving the county certification, you're approving the, what I gave you in your packets.
So we don't have to do the second one?
So, and then you can approve the resolution.
Okay. All right, I entertain a motion for either approval or denial of item one, the, the annual certification program.
I make a motion to approve item one of the, uh, to approve the county annual certification.
Is there a second?
All second.
Is there any other discussion? Record your votes, please.
Russ?
Okay. Next item, discuss, consider approval of chairman's signature for the resolution for the county, county certification program. Entertain a motion for approval or denial, please.
I move we approve the chairman's signature for resolution for the county annual certification of program compliance.
Thank you. Is there a second?
All second.
Is there any other discussion? Record your votes.
Okay to close?
Please, close. Okay, this was just my signature, right, Steve?
Who is the second on that, Steve? Thank you, Russ.
That's, that's not yours.
These ones are mine.
Forget that. Okay, I've got to sign.
That one there's for all the board members to sign. These ones are just yours.
Okay, I'll sign that. That's just my signature, correct?
Mark, were you the second on the one part of that?
I'll, I'll just listen.
There you go. Okay. Uh, that takes care of those items. We'll move into old business. Uh, there is none. Public comments. At this time, the public, the board will take comments from the public. Understanding that no action will be taken on any of those items. Anybody from the public wish to speak to the board at this time? Hearing none. Move on to board and staff reports. We'll start with the board. Russ, do you have anything?
We don't. Everything's been running smooth. I only have, we haven't added any.
Okay, Mike?
Oh, I attend, last week I attended a, uh, emergency management board exercise down Bridgeport involving the Western Panhandle. It went very well. And, uh, we have another one scheduled for elected officials November eighth in Bridgeport.
Okay. Uh, I was unable to attend my Thursday meetings. I got sick on Tuesday or Wednesday. Uh, so I spent about three days in bed, so I missed them. I don't have any reports for you, other than the fact that, uh, next week is the State of the Valley. You're all welcome to attend. And, uh, hopefully we won't make a fool of ourselves when we're up there.
Oh, I think you'll be good.
Stop.
They'll be good.
You think?
Some good stats.
You really? You have, you have faith in me, right?
Well, yeah.
We all do.
All you have to do is.
It's a lot of pressure.
The slides that she's going to make, you know.
Just pressure, just showing pictures.
Yeah.
Take a look. Yellowstone Vacation or wherever I'm going to do, right?
No, I got a really cool picture of Rose Brady.
Uh, it's, it's always, it's always good. It's very well attended.
Sheriff's.
So if you plan on.
You know, yeah.
Yeah. So if you plan on going, let Kelly know, I think. Kelly, are you the one?
They all, they, everybody registers on their own, basically.
Okay. All right, you may let, uh, Brenda know that. I don't know whether she understood that. Okay.
Okay.
All right, very good. Uh, that's, that's all I have.
I don't have.
Mark, you have anything? Staff?
I need to go, I need to go over it again. I missed, uh, I was just talking to Lisa. We, uh, have an airport meeting on Wednesday and I think we want to discuss the insurance. Is that what you're leaving to all this?
Mm-hmm. We need to, we need to bring it back again and.
So that's still, that's still on the table, okay?
Yes.
We, we need to kind of jog their memory. Uh, how do you, are you going to be there on that or do you want to get it? Or do you want to just make a list of what you want to?
You just need to present us that we need to, we need to put together a meeting. Who do they want to come to the meeting? All of them or like two people and then you and I and however we want to work it out.
Right.
Hash it out.
Okay, we'll just say that.
And we'll talk about rescinding our resolution that's sitting out there.
Okay, very good.
Okay, thank you for reminding me about that.
Yep.
Okay, staff. Yes, sir? Just come right on up here.
We prefer it so I can hear you.
Absolutely.
You've got, you've got the routine down and that's good to see. I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, I, I felt it appropriate to give the board an update on a couple of items that have come to light over the last couple of weeks. Um, Jean and I, Jean Bauer and I have been in contact with the, the state regarding a couple of items that, uh, really are, I would say, use the word delinquent. Uh, we're required to do a commercial reappraisal every six years. And, uh, six years is, is two thousand twenty-three. The last one was done in two thousand seventeen. That, uh, should be due on December, by December thirty-first of this year. Unfortunately, in order to make that type of deadline, we would have had to have contracted with a mass appraiser probably in, in met, in uh, early, uh, or late, late April, early May. It takes them about six months to get, get it all rounded up. So, uh, obviously we're going to be late on that. The state understands that. Uh, we have, uh, put it out and, and ticket estimates for the mass appraisal. So that's in process right now for all the commercial and industrial property. Uh, hoping to get, uh, an estimate back in the next couple of days. They understand it's a high priority, but we probably will not have results and be able to enter those into our processing system.
Who, who, who'd you send it out to, Robert? Who's, who's?
We sent it out to Standard Appraisal and we're also contacting a gentleman, uh, next week or tomorrow, actually. Jean, how's that gentleman's name?
The guy from Ogallala.
Uh, yeah, I know who you're talking about.
I don't know his name.
Oh, right.
Yeah, we've discussed him.
Yeah, I know, I know who you're talking about. Okay.
So we're reaching out to him tomorrow. That guy, I didn't bring him with me. Uh, and also we're reaching out to, uh, Josh Garris, who used to work for Standard, Standard Appraisal. So I understand he's gone out on his own and so we're going to reach out to him and just find out about his capabilities. How many appraisers he has and timelines and this and that type of thing. So we want to have a well-rounded, you know, you know, if we can, two or three.
So does that come to us before it's approved or you got, or you just approved that through your office?
Uh, we have a hundred and ten thousand dollars for contract services approved in our budget.
Okay.
Uh, so, uh, I believe Jean, unless you disagree, that's already approved?
It's already approved. Um, we can update you when we get.
Yeah, we'll give you an update.
Just add some questions and concerns.
How, how soon do you plan to make a decision?
As soon as we get the estimates because we're, we're, we're behind the gun. I think.
Might be before our next meeting is what you're saying.
I don't think it'll be before our next meeting. I really don't.
I think we'd be interested in at least hearing names and numbers or something at that time if we can.
Yeah, that's completely appropriate.
We just, we've just got some experience with some and.
And I know, I, I.
Lisa.
Robert and Jean, I guess I want to make, make sure you're aware that we, we just owed a chunk of money to Nebraska Property and Assessment Division for services rendered and I put it in the contract line for the assessor's office.
Okay.
So that will reduce it about eight thousand dollars.
Eight thousand, okay.
Okay, just FYI.
That original eight thousand that we were billed?
That seven thousand five hundred fifty-seven, whatever that we were billed.
That was originally billed, okay.
That's, I put it in the assessor's budget. So.
Yeah. Yeah, just, just as a, you know, note, I'm sure that you gentlemen know this, but, you know, the state could, uh, penalize us and fines for being late. Uh, but, uh, they, they are being lenient and they understand the situation and they're working with us. So I think that's a very positive thing, uh, that they're working with their office. Uh, the second item that I wanted to bring to your attention is that, uh, the last residential lot, uh, study done in Scotts Bluff County was in two thousand thirteen. Uh, there's not a statute that says it has to be done every six years, like the commercial, residential, industrial properties. Uh, but, uh, in speaking with the state, it needs to be done as, uh, we suspect values are changing and I think.
These are commercial and residential lots?
Just residential.
Just residential lots?
Lots will be covered in the commercial review.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, residential will be single family and duplexes, okay, as far as the zoning for those particular lots. Uh, so anyways, ten, ten years ago, uh, the last one was done. I think we all know that those values have changed significantly.
What are you, what are your thoughts on who would conduct those, Robert?
Uh, we're, we're going to put that out for request estimates from the same group of people. Um, and hopefully, you know, they're, they're able to, to do that as well. So I think that would probably be the best for us to get that independent valuation from.
Did we always have a, a, a third or a second party do that or was that done through the office or maybe, and I'm, that's not a fair question for you. Because if you weren't.
Based on what I've seen, it's been done both ways. Uh, in the past that there have been appraisal, appraisers involved in the process. Uh, but also, um, some, some counties, and I know that Scotts Bluff in the past has looked at those internally. Uh, but the last time it was formally looked at was twenty thirteen, is my understanding.
Would it, would it behoove us to, just to put out a, for, for local appraisers to do that? Knowing, knowing what the economy is and I'm getting heads shaken back here.
I don't think any of them do mass appraisal.
Yeah, I think they have a general.
So that, so that would, that would fall into the mass appraisal stuff. Okay, I got you.
That's right. So I think most of your, your local ones are going to be fee appraisers.
Yeah.
So that would, it, it wouldn't have the appropriate license.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Those were the two big things. I just want to let you know because I thought, thought it was important for you guys to know.
Yeah, a question for you. How's everything going? Are you getting, are you getting comfortable in there?
Uh, drinking through a fire hose. So, uh, learning multiple things every day.
Yeah.
Uh, running queries, finding, uh, opportunities for us to be better.
I'm hearing, I'm hearing a lot of good things. I can tell you that much.
Oh, good. Good deal, good deal.
We're hearing a lot of good things. That's just great.
The team is excited. They're working really hard. You know, we have a deadline coming up for home state exemptions at the end of October. Uh, we've entered all of those. We've gone through and done a hundred percent QC on those, uh, to make sure, because we're all new staff there. And we wanted to make sure that we were being consistent and, you know, trying to, following what.
I like that word, like that word team. That's kind of.
Yeah.
That's a good thing.
I wanted to introduce Steve Richter. It was our.
Steve.
He works in the office with Robert and he is one of our returning employees.
Welcome, Steve.
That we've talked about, so.
Yeah.
We're glad to have him back.
Two people that has knowledge and I'm all the time saying, hey, Steve.
Is that right? Uh, you get your name, get your nameplate changed to, hey, Steve. There you go. That would work. Thank you again. Thanks for helping out, everybody. Okay?
That's it. If you have any questions for me?
So I might ask you, so how many people do you have in that office besides yourself?
We have, uh, three staff members, myself and Jean. Uh, we're in the process of, uh, reviewing, uh, applications. We're going to have to hire two more people. Okay, so.
You do have applications for them?
We do, we do.
Yeah.
We do have some and Robert needs to look through them now. Jean and I did interview a few other people that would, I think, do, serve well as well. So he just needs to get his two cents.
So would, then you'd be fully staffed after that, Robert?
Yes.
Good.
That's right. So, and if we're not, if we find out that we have too many or we have not enough, I'll come before you and talk to you about that.
And get all ready for protest in July, right?
That's right.
There you go.
Yeah, there's a protest before that.
That should be interesting.
It will be.
It will be interesting. Yeah, okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Robert, thank you so much.
Thank you much.
Thanks for, thanks for your hard work. Uh, other staff? We'll start around the room here. Lisa, anything?
Okay, let's see. There is the Detention Center Leadership Conference next week. It, it would be Wednesday, Thursday or Tuesday, Tuesday, Wednesday? I can't remember.
I don't remember what.
I think it's Wednesday, Thursday.
Well, it's twenty fifth.
Well, no, it's Tuesday, Wednesday because it kind, it's right at the same State of the Valley as the same day as the second day of the conference. So that'll be a.
We have, I found out this out, this is a, a well-known national speaker that's coming in to talk on leadership topics.
Just talk on it.
Uh, anyhow, I've done, this afternoon, we have fifty-three people signed up to the conference, so. People coming from a long distance to see you.
Good.
That's good, yeah. And several staff is going to, that were attending the NERMA conference this Thursday, Friday. I think there's at least six or seven that was going. No, more than that because Steve's taking all of his foremen. And Kelly is going this year, I believe. And maybe Heather and myself and Kurt, Jay, and probably Bonnie always goes.
Pretty good.
Yeah, we'll be well represented there.
Okay.
What else was going? There was like another.
We will, we'll be talking with you later, Sheriff. We have a.
Yes.
We have a tour.
You have a tour today?
Kurt, do you have anything?
That was a silly question.
No, uh, just Jay and I are kind of finalizing the documents for the fueling station. And we're trying to coordinate a kind of a tour with Russ, Steve, myself, Jay, maybe Troy or the sheriff. Try and come up with a, a good location. It's going to be quick, easy in, in and out for everyone that needs to use it. Um, and then I'm, the state right now is working on what they call a transit asset management plan, which is a requirement by FTA. How we're managing everything from our vehicles to our facilities, staff. So if you have any ideas, thoughts or anything, um, it, it really gets pretty involved is, is how we manage our fleet and everything. As part of that is how you care for your facilities. So I did put in a request for a, uh, floor cleaning machine for the bus barn so we could have a, keep a cleaner in the winter especially. And not have to wash it down with a power washer in January. And actually, uh, state came back with Carezak funding for that. So it's a, about a twenty-two thousand dollar machine that we're getting for.
No kidding?
Good job.
Wow. They still have Carezak money?
Any ideas or things that you would like us to see, do better differently, whether it be with our fleet or our facilities? Let me know. We've got a pretty short deadline to get that info to the state.
Does the Road Runner need any motor graders or anything? Just a thought. I don't know if you can kick that out there.
That's all I have.
Steve, stay on top of that, buddy. Any, all right, other staff? I saw some hands coming up anywhere. Tyler?
Uh, since last meeting, I attended the initial, uh, co-ed meeting.
Uh, since last meeting, I attended the initial, uh, uh, co-ed meeting for, uh, for the Panhandle, and that's community organizations active in disaster. And so, basically, anybody can be involved with this that wants to be involved with it, I know Commissioner Blue, uh, is gonna be active in it. I was there, Emergency Management was there, there were staff from the UNL, uh, Extension Office there. Uh, some faith-based organizations, people, uh, food pantries, that kinda thing, and basically, uh, the idea behind it is have an organization, uh, to be ready for a disaster. Uh, whether it be, you know, housing displaced peoples, or feeding people, or clean water, or managing livestock, or crops, or whatever it might be, when things hit the fan, that there's a plan in place and a group of people that know who has the capabilities and the resources and the knowledge to solve the problems that come with the disaster.
Doesn't Region Twenty-two do that?
Well, they're, they're involved with it, um, but it's, uh, it's kinda beyond, I think, what their full capability is. You know, 'cause it's, it's gonna be a lot of, um, agreements and, um, meetings and planning between people that are not Region Twenty-two, twenty-two Emergency Management. You know, uh, just people in the community that are, that are concerned about preparedness and, uh, you know, being able to respond to a disaster effectively. Because I think that, in the event of a disaster, obviously, my department would be handling it from the side of communication with, you know, first responders. Uh, Emergency Management, he can bring in a lot of resources, you know, from the state and federal level. But these are kind of people that are local, that just are in that like-minded, uh, you know, sort of way of seeing things, that they wanna be prepared and know people that are willing to help in, in a time need.
Okay, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm confused, I, I, I thought that's what Region Twenty-two and our Emergency Management Department takes care of.
Well, I can address that. Uh, part of the problem is, is Region Twenty-two is going more to a support role, because there's a real lack of trained people at a certain level. Of training that you need to have to take a real leadership role and actually run a, a major operation. And what the federal government has found out since, well, well before nine eleven even, there's a lot of organization and groups out there in communities that have skill, skilled and trained people who are a valuable asset in a disaster, such as faith-based groups, nonprofits, hospitals. An example is Moraw County Community Hospital. Uh, they attend all of our table exercises, they are very well-trained, they're very involved, and so, they're part of this co-ed. As long, along, along with churches, uh, Panhandle, Community Health, uh, a lot of organizations. And we're attacking it from all angles, because when you have a disaster or a situation in a community, it isn't necessarily localized, and you don't have all the trained personnel to take care of that situation, and just we're able to call on a bigger region to bring these organizations in, uh, to run family processing centers, shelters, uh, feeding, uh, medical aid, communications, law enforcement, public works, all those kinda things. And so, what's happening is we are getting prepared for the big picture. And Region Twenty-two is an essential part of that, but we need the expertise of all these other groups and what they bring to the plate.
Sound like you're hiring chiefs, so who, who is actually gonna be in charge of this thing?
Right, that's what I'm interested in.
I would like to know who's gonna be in charge, so you don't have a power struggle out there and nothing.
Well, if you follow the incident command system, you will not have a power struggle. You will have an incident commander, whether it be a chief of police, sheriff, or fire, depending on what kinda disaster it is.
Yeah, you'll have a logistics chief, you'll have a communications chief.
Planning chief, logistics.
I know, like, like Tim and myself have been, and I know probably the sheriff and, and lots of law enforcement and fire personnel are all trained in the incident command system.
And that's why I wanna push ICS training for every county employee.
Is that the NIMS?
Because you have to understand the incident command system.
Is that NIMS?
You won't have those.
Uh, yeah, it's, it's a step further beyond NIMS, uh, you know, one hundred, two hundred, seven hundred, eight hundred.
But it would be a good way to know it?
Yeah, yeah, it's the ICS three hundred and four hundred.
Most of the situations we get involved in here are at the ICS two hundred level. Rarely do we get beyond that, but in order to run these operations, you need to be qualified at least through three hundred and four hundred. And then, like myself, I'm at that position where I need to specialize. And so, I'm gonna specialize in liaison, 'cause I know all these different agencies, I know all these people. So, I think I'd be a better asset to bring these people together.
At, at this point, I've taken what, uh, Tim has recommended, or has told me that is required as an elected official?
As elected official, technically speaking, you should be qualified through Level Three Hundred and Four Hundred as a county commissioner or a city council member. According to the ICS.
I can't remember which ones, but I, there's other ones that I probably should take, but I have not.
You, you, at your level, you should take one hundred, two hundred, seven hundred, and eight hundred. And then, it would probably be really valuable for you to go ahead and take a three hundred and four hundred, which is, those are like five-day courses.
Three hundred and four hundred?
Yes.
Didn't he, didn't I have to take like nine hundred?
I don't remember.
They don't necessarily go in order?
No.
No, but he didn't say that one yet.
No.
Well, and he just offered one.
That's a nice to have one, but there's a lot of different ones, like.
I've got three.
G four oh two is for like county commissioner, city council members, other elected officials.
Okay.
And it goes into what their role in disaster is, and like this training we're doing in November, they're gonna concentrate on the, uh, Emergency Operations Center, what's expected of an elected official who is called upon to, to be in there.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. We probably need to bring.
It's, it's an ongoing thing.
We need Tim to come and talk, because we are, our leadership, at least our commissioners, I think you're the only one that's like caught up with your certifications, so we need to see where we stand and what we need to do, if there was a disaster.
I've got, I've got several of them too, I just don't know what they are, I took them.
Well, then he needs to, he needs to provide that, I don't think we have any of that information, Ken, so, as far as our concern, our records are concerned, we don't.
I'm still concerned with the same issue that Russ is, because I don't know enough maybe about the incident command system. But what I do know is when those things start to happen, somebody has to be in charge.
And that happens, right?
And who's gonna appoint that incident commander?
Always feelings hurt when you start that.
Well, these fire agencies and law enforcement agencies are all well-trained in ICS, in this command. So, let's say you have a fire or a natural disaster, initially, it's probably gonna be the fire chief. But what happens is, if it's a potential, um, there's always that potential for a crime scene. If it falls more in the jurisdiction of the sheriff, the sheriff will be the, uh, in charge, and he will appoint an IC. And, and actually, uh, the ones I've been involved in, which have been many, it's always been very well organized, nor has not been, been an issue of who's in charge.
I'll just, I'll give you one example. The first year I was the sheriff, the emergency manager came to the county board in May and said, "Gentlemen, you have a, you need to declare a flood emergency, because we're gonna have a flood." And, and they knew it, and, and I'd also been told, gee, you should, I had some of these ICS, but I didn't have the three hundred and four hundred to take a week. And they said, "Well, you need these," so, okay, so I went to them in March. And so, the emergency manager, who was with the city of Scottsbluff at the time, said, "You need, you as the commissioners need to declare a flood emergency, and you need to name an incident commander," and so, you named me the incident commander. And then, we built this, we built this, uh, uh, this system and this, uh, people to fill all the various spots. And it was, and it was a lot of people from the county that, and.
I was in, I was involved in that from, from, yeah, from the get-go.
This incident command system, every time you get a, a sizable fire, we use that, we kinda follow that when, on any major law enforcement thing. We, we may not build it officially, but we, we follow that, usually, our stuff doesn't last that long, but, uh, we have incident commanders. It's really a, a good roadmap for how to do things.
Yeah, that, uh, we, we held the meeting, we decided who was going to do what.
Right.
That's, that's when you were appointed, and there were, there were several others like yourself that were appointed to do, we, we knew it was coming, or we assumed it was going to come, and we were, and I, I think we were very well-prepared for it, when, when it did get here.
So, do those names get updated then, as you go through the show? Well, every, every, there's.
Yeah, everything's different.
No list that exists that says, "If we have an emergency, these are the names." It kinda depends on the emergence.
And what we have in place right now is, Emergency Management, uh, in, in all the different areas of western Nebraska, they have a list of specialties and who they can call. Uh, like myself, I got about a list this long, and I'm plugged in that system, so, say if something happens in Hastings, and they need a mass fatality guy, bingo. They can call Scottsbluff County, and I go to Hastings, 'cause I'm certified to train. And so, right now, they do have a list, and they're building on that list and expanding it. Uh, and right now, this co-ed and the different emergency managers are doing a really good job of putting together, uh, teams, but they're good. You gotta have people willing to take the training, so they know what they're doing. Worst thing you can have is an elected official go to a scene that doesn't know what he's doing. You gotta, you gotta rely on your experts.
Fires that you've seen around here, had some huge fires over the past several years, they're all managed in this manner.
In what?
In this manner.
Right, and so, let's use the, the southeast fire out here.
Right.
Would that gearing fire chief probably got appointed as the incident commander?
He was the first incident commander, and then, as they bring more assets in, there'll be other people coming in, and, and then, there, they would, he would still be very much involved in it.
Okay, but at some point in time, he may be.
He might, he might not be, depending on who comes.
You know, like, say if a Type Three team comes in, and they have a better qualified individual, they will take charge. They will still use our people, and our people will be in key positions, but, just like me, I've been in places where, uh, first on scene, I'm the incident commander, until somebody better qualified shows up. And then, at that point, that person either takes over, or they may work with me as an individual, and we will co-lead. But, yeah, it's, in a, in a true ICS, uh, system, which everybody in the United States uses, uh, there's usually no power struggles. It's, it's extremely, extremely rare.
But, but an answer to your question, Russ, and, and Mark, you answered very well. Every, every disaster, every situation is something different. You know, if we get a, if we get a major explosion downtown, the, the local fire chief is probably gonna be the guy in charge, and everybody else is going to be working with them. So, every, every situation is different.
So, why are we changing that?
We're not, we're not changing, we're not changing that.
We're just building on it, making it better. That's part of the Region Twenty-two system, is you build on your team to get more expertise, and part of that is building up mutual aid and local agreements with other organizations, because the nice thing about using faith-based groups, other nonprofits, they don't cost you anything. And that's what the federal government's found out at nine eleven, and some of these other big things they had is, faith-based groups, nonprofits can come in, and that don't cost you a dime. And so, that's what you all look at, is how many of these organizations can we get to come alongside us, because we don't have the bodies. And a lot of times, we don't have the expertise, they do.
Well, I'm, my only issue, I agree with that part of what you're saying. Um, and certainly, any and all volunteer groups and things like that, I, I'm trusting that we know who they are and that, um, we have ways to get a hold of those kinds of people, and if we don't, then that certainly needs to be part of this. But I, uh, if we have a, a fire situation that crosses two or three counties, and one or two different emergency management areas, then, I've been in situations where three or four different people think they're in charge, and, um, and it isn't good when that happens. And maybe that's all been solved now, um, with, with, uh, ICS, but, um, I would just be, I'm always, would be cautious of it. Because sometimes it gets.
When you started speaking, I thought you said you wanted to build a leadership team, your organization.
Well, they, they are, that's a, that's an evolving thing, and the thing is, you need to take the training, so you know what you're talking about, that's the bottom line is. And we have the leadership, it's either gonna be a fire chief or a sheriff initially.
What's, what's the issue?
Bodies. You need trained people, you, all these volunteer groups that are asked to come in, they have to take the ICS training.
Every year.
They're not, they're not just a bunch of amateurs.
Every year or two, I get a deal, I don't know who, from, I guess it must be, it must come from emergency management or it's from state. They call to wanna know every piece of equipment I've got, they wanna know the rates on it, how fast I can move it, 'cause they, they've got all that stuff, and I fill it all out.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause you're on the list, they're, they're, all these construction companies are on the list, is what they have. So, in a big, big emergency, and Tyler could probably agree to this, is they know who to call, okay, we need this type of road grader, do you have one, and operate, you can come. And that's all part of that system.
The, the, the assets are all part of a package, Russ, whether it be your company and, and equipment, whether it be, uh, uh, the hospital, whether, what, you know, whatever needs to happen. Depending on the situation is who you're gonna, who you're gonna be calling on, whatever, whatever it is that you need.
County's equipment first, and then.
Whatever, whatever has to happen, but somebody has to authorize that.
Right.
And, and one, I, and I can tell you, there's more than once that I've had to sign a, the state declaration, uh, you know, for the fire situations, and we get the airplanes and, and the authority to bring in other departments and, you know, and other things out, and Tim does a great job of, you know, ho- ho- putting that all, putting that all together. And Mark, and as to your question, there is a list of assets of, of who has what and where they're at, and if we need them, we can call them, one of those kinda things. Uh, you know, whether it be funeral directors, or whatever, veteran, very, very, I know, you know what I'm talking about, the ones that take care of animals. They, they had, uh, a, a good example is when the tornado hit out here in college, college estates. We had, I think, no less than twelve veterinarians that showed up to take care of the animals that were all loose out in that area. Now, you wouldn't think about something like that, but they were on the list, and they were called, and they came out and did a great job. So, that, it, yeah, it's a, it's a work in progress, and it's always, it's always out there.
And that's, emergency manager's job is to find and train all the resources so they're ready, and that's what co-ed is doing. It's part of that, to bring everybody together and be trained and ready to go.
Anything else, Tyler?
Uh, and then also, uh, I don't know, I think, uh, Commissioner Blue was at a couple advisory board meetings when we were talking about, we were trying to get our money back from Central Square for the e-citation module that they did not complete for us, we paid for it back in twenty eighteen. And, uh, they had notified us earlier this year that they just weren't gonna do it, and so, we had to go with the e-citation, uh, solution through MOC for law enforcement. Sheriff has been there with that, and I got them to give us our money back.
Good for you, thank you.
It was right, right around thirty-eight grand or so.
Good for you.
Great.
And, uh, that's it.
They just saw your size, that's all.
Yeah, I just basically, I threatened them.
They, they do, they weren't gonna mess with you, right?
Use whatever you have.
Tyler?
No.
Alright, anybody else?
Oh, we have a insurance committee meeting Wednesday morning, I was making sure you two were aware.
Steve?
Just a few things, uh, here, three weeks ago, we had a motor grader training for the guys. I had a company from back east come out and do a two-day training, was half a day in the classroom and a day and a half out in the field. So, they got a lot of info out of it, a lot of, uh, great stuff, so, there's gonna be some different things going, trying out on the gravel to see.
Is this something new, or is this something that we've done before?
It's something new.
Good for you.
This is a four-pass method, instead of a three that we usually do, we're gonna be trying to knock the windrows off, see what happens with rain when that way. So, there's gonna be some different experiments going on with the gravel.
Good.
The guys are gonna take a little bit to learn the new method and that, to get used to doing it different than what they've done for years, so.
That's good to hear.
It was a good, a good training. Some updates on the bridge things, the County Road Five Bridge, they're starting to get a little work going on out there, it looks like. Rerouting the crick and stuff, there's simply some equipment out there as of today, anyway. Um, the County Road G Bridge up on nineteen and G, that right now is an over twenty-foot bridge on our bridge list. It looks like we are going to be able to just put a seventy-two-inch pipe in there to handle the water that they put there. So, if that works out right, we will be able to take that off of our bridge, over twenty bridge list, and I'd have to do the annual inspections and, and all that with it. So, that'd be a good deal there. Um, County Road M, and, uh, just got approved today from MDOT for the plans, so that, as, as soon as that happened, it went out for bids. So, that, as, as soon as that happened, it went out for bid, so it's gonna be out on the bid, and so are the river bridges. So, at the November sixth meeting right now, we have that day to, uh, open the bids that day and approve those bids. Hopefully, at that November sixth meeting, the engineers will be out here, so.
Yeah, a lot going on there.
So, um, that's pretty much it.
Pretty good.
Steve, I was gonna tell you on County Road C, behind my house, where they knocked that, that windrow off.
Right.
Uh, you know, that usually washes some big gullies out. You know, it'll pile up and it'll wash out. I drove that whole thing in, uh, Sunday, and, uh, there's nothing. Except around that little curb, when you make that curb, that water came in from both directions and kind of washed that curb. Other than that, that road is in perfect shape all the way.
Right.
Yeah, we, you know, with knocking off the windrows and this four-pass method, he taught them, you know, they seem to be handling these rains better than what they even have, so.
It looks like you change your bar pit slope a little flatter as well. It looks a little better that way.
Yeah, a lot of our bar pits were not in the standard that they should've been. They were too steep, so we're just kind of flattening those out as they go along. So, they learned a lot in the training, and it's gonna take, you know, quite a while to get around eight hundred miles and do all this, but, you know, it was good.
But you're gonna do that again.
Yeah, I'll probably bring this, this guy out. You know, once a year, he has several different levels of training, from on top of the road, in the ditch, to uh, starting from the very beginning and building a road to snow plowing. You know, he, he has dozer training, he has everything, so. I'll probably bring him out once a year for one step or another with the grader, so.
I talked to Chris too, uh, foreman, and he had told me that, uh, they, they set the blades, and I think you told me as well, that they, they change the angle on the blades to get rid of the washboard in a lot.
Right. A lot of it was change the angle, change the pitch of the blade, and different, different things like that to help them out, so.
Now, everybody's pretty consistent. You go down the roads and everything's looking a lot better. As, as they're using it now, you can see that it's coming together, and it's all looking a lot more consistent, so.
Very good. Thank you, Steve. Anybody else? Yes, Kelly.
Just, I went to my election training in Kearney last week. Got some good stuff. Still trying to figure out the best way for the new voter ID to be as easy on voters and my poll workers. But coming up with some good ideas of how we can do that.
Something, what, something other than a driver's license, or?
No, just the easiest process.
Oh, I see.
When somebody doesn't bring it, but they're still allowed to vote, but they have to bring something to my office within seven days. There's just a lot of stuff that was written into the law that, which is trying to make it easy, the easiest on everybody. I mean, the easiest would be for all of our registered voters to get a driver's license or their free state ID.
An ID really is.
To, to vote, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'm just gonna jump onto that real quick, that what, what Kelly said. We are seeing people come in even at this point and getting their free voter, or their free state ID. Because they can say that they can use it for voting purposes and share ID as, ID card is free.
Okay. Anybody else? If not, we will, uh, move to the detention center for our tour.
See you there.
Okay.
Could I have a motion, please?
Do you have a motion?
I move that we, uh, end the meeting here and go to the, uh, detention center.
For a second?
Second.
Record your votes. Okay, thank you, everybody. I've gotta go to the bathroom. I'll take that with me.
Yeah, I've got, I've got one similar to this at the office, though it's like from nineteen eighty-one or something.
See what I can do.
Yeah, we've had, I've got some, some are older and.
Yeah, this is the latest updated one. Fifteen bucks, you can.